Good evening, everyone, and thank you to start proceedings tonight. We've invited Father Peter O'Loughlin from the Catholic Bell Reef Parish to have a little prayer.
Good, thank you. Well, I guess you've all been aware of the Synod on the Family in Rome, and that included this weekend, and there were thousands in St Peter's Square there to listen to the Pope, and he didn't give very much away, except to say he was all about and interested in the welfare and the wellbeing of families. And after the deliberations, we hope and pray that there'll be some easing and some gentling, because the Pope said that we have to be considerate and be aware of the difficulties and the joys of family life. Family is very central to each one of us, and so we pray that all our families may be blessed. We pray that with thanksgiving for what we've achieved and what we owe to our families in our heritage, in their example, in their support. We pray also that we will do our part to promote the wellbeing of all in our community who are family in different ways, some in a normal family, some in a fragmented family, some who have no family. We pray that governments and councils and schools and churches will always be aware of the needs of families and the needs of all individuals, that they may have education, they may have health services, that they may be able to live comfortably and eat well. We pray that in all things we may be concerned about the welfare of families, give thanks to our families and give support to all others. We ask this through Christ down low. Amen.
Thank you, Father Peter. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land on which we're meeting this evening, and pay respect to elders past. Thank you. The meeting is open, and we have a full house, so there are no apologies. Item 2 is confirmation of minutes from the 5th October. Are circulated, be taken as read and confirmed. Thank you, Alderman Fears, Second Alderman Chong. Motion is, all those in favour? Against? Carry it. Nothing to report at item 3. Item 4, the council notes the workshop conducted on the 12th and 19th October in the agenda briefing on the 23rd. Thank you, Alderman Fears, Second Alderman Chong, Alderman Favour. Carry unanimously. Item 5 is declarations of interest. Alderman or close associate?
Item 11.37.
Thank you, Alderman Campbell. Any other conflicts of interest or declarations of interest? Thank you. Item 6, tabling of petitions.
No petitions, Mr Mayor.
Any from the floor? Thank you. Public question time, there's nothing on notice. Are there any questions from members of the public without notice? Mr Fig?
Through you, Mr Mayor. A question about the Lord of Dale structure plan and the current tender. It's a bit confusing that in the newspaper there was an ad for a capability study, and the scope of work stated a feasibility study. Could you please tell us what is happening with this situation? One, we've noticed there hasn't been a tender awarded yet. When a tender is awarded, are they in this process, whatever it may be, coming up with an amendment to the Lord of Dale structure plan, and also an adjustment to the urban growth boundary? And also, could we have a timeline for both the tendering being announced and when the project will be finished? This is question number one.
That's a multi-faceted one, if you could just take one at a time, Mr Fig, to take an opportunity. General Manager?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I can answer parts of the questions. The tenders have actually closed. We've conducted interviews with those parties that we determined to were suitable for interview, and we've worked through a process with them, and we're currently going through a process of determining who to award the tender to. I'd hopefully determine that in the next two to three weeks. So we should have an appointment in three weeks' time at the outside, maybe a little earlier. In relation to the timeframe for the tender, that is something we're working through with the short-visited parties at the moment, because they all provided a range of varying responses to that. I won't go into the details, but it is a process that will take, we would expect, several months to tickle through.
Yeah, second question. The third part to that question was the Lord of Dale structure plan and the urban growth boundary. Is that going to be dealt with in this project? Because as I said, it's been stated as two different projects.
The outputs we get from the consultants will provide recommendations in relation to amendments to the Lord of Dale structure plan and ergo amendments to, proposed amendments to the urban growth boundary as well.
Supplementary to...
Without going too much into the debate...
Supplementary to that question, Mr Mayor, it was our understanding that there was a directive from the minister that the urban growth boundary and the Lord of Dale structure plan be amended. It sounds like this hundred thousand is not going to be doing that. It's going to be an answer to whether it can be done.
Look, this sounds like... Mr Fig, can you bear with me for a moment, please? This sounds like we're entering a debate. I'm aware that we have a meeting scheduled for the 3rd of November, and we're happy to go into it in great detail, but on this occasion, it's a matter of asking a question, and we'll do our best to answer it.
Well, that's fine, hopefully you'll have the answers there that day, but I'd like it on the public record, please. The second question, public submissions. We've been told that council won't be showing the public who and what the submissions were. Is that correct to...
Relation to what?
This was the planning scheme, I think, the last submissions that were put in.
This in your plans?
Yeah, yeah. We're concerned because, one, we don't know what comments were made, and as public transparency, we would like to see what comments, and we'd also like to see a list of the people that put them through. Could you explain how the council is going to deal with this?
Through you, Mr Mayor. And Mr Lovell might add to this if I get this slightly wrong, but we will be providing the detail of all of the submissions to council in a public format. That will generally manifest itself as a summary or some detail in terms of the particular points raised in regard to the representations or matters to be considered, but we generally don't make public the names and addresses of the people who've made the submissions on the basis of, quite frequently, they've made that in the expectation that it's confidential to the member council. I think that's a fairly standard practice, Mr Lovell. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. It's just a question of transparency, because as you know, with the Walbert Corporation...
Mr Fig, I say again, it's not an opportunity to make a statement. Do you have another question as supplementary, or...
Mr Mayor...
I'm really happy to expand on this in our meeting that's scheduled for the 3rd. And if you like, we can take questions on notice, and so the answers are in the public domain as a result of that process. Any other questions from members of the public? Item 8 is deputations from members of the public, General Manager. Yes, Mr Mayor, we have two deputations this evening. First is Sally Molison. Come forward, please, from Tranmere Road, who wishes to address council in relation to a development application that has support council tonight at 51 Tranmere Road.
Sorry, just before you get underway, I've been a bit slow. I do need to remind all our speakers that we can only under the rules by three minutes, and there'll be a sound at two and a half minutes, give it to anything.
We trust that members of council will consider our concerns and choose not to support this development application in its current form. Our home shares a boundary with the land of the proposed development. Some aspects of the proposal do not comply with the requirements of the interim planning scheme, and the development would adversely impact us on three main ways: unreasonable loss of sunlight onto our patio and primary outdoor living area, loss of privacy into our living room, and unreasonable loss of amenity. The garage for House One is proposed to be built right up to the boundary on our northern side. The shadow cast by the garage is of great concern. In winter shade from the garage will extend to cover our entire patio. Our primary outdoor living space will be considerably cast in shade from early afternoon. Our family sits in this space because it is warm, sunny, and sheltered from southerly wind. It is one of the most precious aspects of living in our home, and we value it immensely. It seems very wrong that this pleasure could be taken away for the sake of building a garage. It would seem to be a simple matter to redesign the plans to position the garage away from the boundary. The window and the proposed office faces directly into our living room, full width window. This impacts significantly on our privacy into our living room. The location of the window does not comply with the requirements of the planning scheme. It does not provide an acceptable solution, and it does not meet the relevant performance criteria. We do not want to have our privacy compromised by the inappropriate location of a window. The council planning office's assessment stated that because the building fits within the building envelope, there is no problem, but the building envelope is irrelevant considering this is a matter of privacy. The location of the office window is not an acceptable solution and doesn't meet the performance criteria for windows inhabitable rooms. We've lived in our home for eight years. What attracted us to buy here in this Clarets region was the quiet, relaxed environment on the river reserve with a sunny effect with water and mountain view. This development will unreasonably impact on each and every one of these aspects of value to us and our families. The proponents, when they built the block, there was one house centrally located on the block, set back from the river reserve like ours and others. They showed us their plans after their purchase, which included demolition of the house, construction of two units on Tranmere Road, one house located centrally on the block with a similar setback to ours, well removed from our boundary. We accepted the location of the first unit built on our boundary. The plans were unlikely to impact us. If we'd known at the time, they would later change their plans to include two more dwellings built towards the river reserve on our boundary, we would certainly have objected to the ground. We feel it is unreasonable and unfair to have to accept first building of a garage by the Mount Wellington. The impact of our views from the forward position of the post-house and its close proximity represents unreasonable loss of our amenity. We lose all views of Mount Wellington, setting stone from our home, both of which we value immensely. We trust that members of council will consider our reserve and choose not to support development application in its current form. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, is Mr John Price of Bell Reef, who wishes to address council in relation to draft dog policy.
Good evening, Alderman and members of the public, and the Clarence County staff. As you brought a view of the council, you know me, because I've spoken to a lot of you about the rigid dog proposal of banning dogs from Bell Reef Beach. Now, I've actually met a number of people to the proper forms who've done most of the work on this side of the river, actually applied statistics, had spoken to dog walkers in on Dog Walkers at Bell Reef Beach, and we're quite concerned that the council has actually had negative feedback with the proposal, which is going to do with banning dogs from Beet Street, which is the first Bell Reef one, and to actually protect the same regulations regarding Beet Street to Bell Reef Second Lot. Now, we are actually very happy with this proposal, and I'm actually coming here tonight to commend the council for actually making the decision, well, the proposal, we've made. And we have had a lot of consultation with dog walkers or Hobart dog walkers, but we certainly differ from them, where they have protests about the area of the beach, which is what we consider probably eighty to a hundred feet from the beach, and we actually recognise that the people who don't have dogs actually have a right to exist on that part of the beach. There is one provider, one of those, and that big one is that we don't see there is a creek. So for instance, the Beet Street access isn't suddenly moved a hundred metres further up the beach next year, and then next year another two hundred metres, so creeks are... That's very important to actually maintain what could be the status quo if we hope you know, pretty maniously. The second thing is, I think we're very much in agreement, and this includes Hobart dog walkers, is that we suggest, it's dog walkers, probably members of the public, that you actually impose a heavy fine, two hundred dollars, for people who transgress not picking up dog droppings. I think you're very concerned about sanitation, like we are. And even though dog rangers may never actually catch a person with nets, what we can do as members of the public is actually say, excuse me, do you realise that the two hundred dollars fine, and that could be extremely effective, and it's the same with footpaths as well as beaches, so I think we're on the same page there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more speakers, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Item 9 is motions on notice. Alderman Carter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wish to withdraw this motion again and leave it on the table for another two meetings.
Well, do we have a...
Here, here.
So that's a procedural motion that I take it that it lay on the table for another two meetings?
Thank you.
I'll put the procedural motion, all those in favour? Against? Carry it. Item 10 is reports from outside bodies, Southern Caribbean Council's authority, that the quarterly report for 30th of June be received. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Sure.
Second Alderman Carter, Alderman Chong. Yes, on the report on page forty-six, it talks about a local government structures report, which says an independent evaluation study has been completed, and I'm just wondering whether that was going to give us anything that might be useful in the amalgamation discussions that we have.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I suspect that that's the evaluation report that was submitted as part of the funding that they provided for the Munro report, if I can call it that. I will actually follow up on that, confirm it, and ascertain whether there are any details that are relevant, and provide a report back through the briefing report.
Any other questions on the quarterly report? Motion then is that the quarterly report for 30th of June be received.
Is it court... Sorry. Yes, T C A four.
Sure.
Here's without, sorry.
Okay, all those in favour? Carry it unanimously. At Copping Refuge disposal site, I noticed that there's an item in the close meeting for that. Is there anything you want to add at this stage, Alderman Carter? Southern Way Strategy Authority, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, the recommendation that the quarterly report of Sua's fourth quarter ending June 2015 be received.
Thank you, Alderman Carter. Any questions, discussions? Motion is as put, all those in favour? Carry unanimously. There's nothing to report. The Tasmanian Water Corporation, item 10.2, reports from council and special committees, the bicycle committee, Alderman Carter?
Report?
Have a second, then. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Any speakers, questions on the bicycle committee report? Motion is the report be received, all those in favour? Carry unanimously. Tracks and Trails Committee report, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before I actually move, the recommendation that's listed, I just would like to make one comment on page forty-nine with regards to the Clarence Coastal Trail roped to Lord of Dale. The motion that is listed in the agenda, I have received notification from the General Manager's secretary today that there will be a meeting next Monday at three o'clock, that the meeting will, the discussions between myself, the mayor, and the general manager will be present to work through where we go from here, as far as whether it can lead to, and hopefully we would like it to go to that point, to meet the minister, discuss the matter further. So that's next Monday, the 2nd of November, at three o'clock. So I just thought I'd let colleagues know that that matter is in train, and I'll advise you with an update in due course.
Sorry, question. Did we have Alderman Chong second of the recommendation there, which I presume you've now moved, Alderman James? Question, yes?
All of the potential ramifications of such a meeting, should, are there such matters that it could discuss that should really come back before council, before proceeding ahead? It sounds like a potentially a cabal rather than a consultative process. I have some concerns.
Well, at this stage, if I can answer that, Alderman James, as chair of Tracks and Trails has requested the meeting, I'll hold that meeting and find out exactly what he wants to talk about, and then we'll work out the best ways forward from there.
And that'll be brought back to council?
I have noted your concern, and rest assured, we'll make sure that we won't be taking any decisions generally, that we'll be consulted. It might involve a workshop, it might involve council meeting, but we need to have that meeting, as we would indeed with any ordinary question. Any other discussion on that topic? Okay, I put the motion that the report be received, all those in favour? Against? Carry it. I'd now like to table the minutes of the Hobart International Airport Community Advisory Consultation Group for August, and the Southeast Region Development Association, which dates back to April, but it's the last seven minutes. Any other committee reports? Alderman here?
Business Affairs Board of Management for September.
Alderman Fears? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to present the Windisfaran Community Activity Centre, minutes for the meeting of the 15th October.
Mr Mayor, I don't have a written report yet, but I'd just like to report on the sea fair report tour that occurred yesterday. I'd like to let all of the Alderman know and the gallery that we had a very successful sea fair at the festival. There were a great number of people actually present. We think it might be a record crowd, don't we, Alderman Chong? We're very close to it, if not. And everybody seemed to enjoy themselves, and there were a variety of marine activities and on-land activities, and the navy band was absolutely brilliant in the marines. So we really are very pleased with our actually win. Any other...
Lord of Dale report. Any other reports?
But I will have to give them, and the main later, the Bell Reef Community Arts Centre monthly meeting of October.
Other reports? Item 11 is reports of officers, the weekly briefing report, the info in reports of the 5th, 12th and 19th of October be noted. Thank you, Alderman Carter. Second, Alderman Chong. I ask that all those in favour? Carry it unanimously. 11.2, determination of petitions, there's nothing to report there. So I now advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planings and Prove Wack 1993. Item 11.3.1 is a development application for New York, nine, Ormond Street, Bell Reef, additions to dwelling. Alderman Fears, thank you. Second Alderman Carter. Can't speak?
Thank you, Mayor. The objector did have some concerns about visual bulk and overshadowing. I just read the officer's comments on page fifty-nine, where it's got, as discussed, the upper disagreed to modify the design to comply with the boundary setback requirements in relation to the southern boundary, shared with Two Big Lakes Street. However, the proposal still requires a variation, obviously, but I mean, I think that's pretty reasonable, and I think it's quite a reasonable design. It is a corner block, and I've had a look at it, and I think it fits quite well in that area.
Alderman Carter?
I agree, Mr Mayor. It's not asking for any variations, it's a single-storey dwelling, and it's a really good place to infill in that area.
Figures?
Yes.
Right, rep. Motion is the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions, all those in favour? Carry it unanimously. 11.3.2 is a development application for 13th Park Street, Bell Reef, to multiple dwellings. Alderman Walker? Alderman Carter, thank you. Would you like to speak to it? Alderman Carter, would you like to speak to it?
We've got a lot of infill happening lately, so I'm expecting to see an increase in support services, people moving into our area.
Figures? Alderman James?
I actually visited adjoining neighbours last night, and they, as well as the other representative of Queen Street, have concerns about this. The question that arises in relation to this, and I wasn't going to raise it with previous matter, but it just seems to me that in this particular case, and the other one at 51 Tranmere, there's a lot of subjectivity coming into the performance criteria. In other words, if we look at this particular proposal on page seventy-one, the proposal does not have direct access to private open space, and clause 10.4.3a2c is quite specific inasmuch as it says, a dwelling must have an area of private open space that is directly accessible from and adjacent to a habitable room other than a bedroom. This does not meet the acceptable standard. And the qualification that seems to be the be-all and-all, or what gives enough wriggle room, I think, to be able to say, well, the variation ought to occur in this instance because the existing dwelling has access to private open space through a laundry in the rear. So when we are looking at trying to identify some of these standards, where it's quite clear that it's not in accordance with the planning scheme, and so we have a fallback position of going to the performance criteria, then I contend, Mr Mayor, that there is a lot of subjectivity here, and no direct shot at the planners, but the plan is putting forward a proposal to say, in the performance criteria... to say in the performance criteria assessment, the existing dwelling has access to private open space through a laundry at the rear and via an entrance hallway at the first floor. The front area is directly adjacent to a living area with the good solar access further as this is the existing solution, uh, situation, which has adequately served the dwelling since its construction and is considered appropriate. Now, look, that to me appears to be trying to qualify something which is in the acceptable solution does not apply. That's the first point. Then we can go down to clause ten point four point six. And in that it says privacy for all dwellings. Proposal, the driveway is directly adjacent to a two bedroom of the existing dwelling. That is contrary to what is proposed under the acceptable solution. And again, if you go and look at the performance criteria giving meat to the variation, I want to put it that way. The location, the driveway in relation to the house ensures that there will be no headlights aimed directly into the room adjacent to it. The driveways are short enough that vehicles will be travelling at a low enough speed to ensure that there is not unreasonable traffic noise causing passing vehicles. Because we're talking about privacy for dwellings here and it's all subjective in my view. So look, I have concerns, I, I don't think that the performance criteria in this case has enough meat, enough substance to be able to say that the acceptable solutions or standards are not, are not being justified, are not being supported. And in this case, I cannot support this because I think that the reasons given in the performance criteria are inadequate. They do not address the, uh, acceptable standards. And I believe this is probably another situation when we get to discuss another matter further down the agenda. But I will be speaking in, in almost exactly the same terms because I don't think that we have the right, uh, information to be able to say that the discretion is required in relation to this when I believe the acceptable solutions are not supportive or not being supported by the performance criteria.
Well, I don't profess to be the council's most ardent expert and utiliser of, uh, subjectivity as a criterion, but on the fundamental metrics, uh, the officers have found the solution to be acceptable. I've read their comments and, uh, inclined to, to agree with them. And, uh, I suspect if this was contested at a higher level, a higher level would, uh, do the same. Seek your support.
Motion is sent, officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions, all those in favour? Against? Carry. Seven point three point three is a development application at seven Espinard, Seven Mile Beach for a dwelling addition. Alderman Pierce, thank you. Uh, second Alderman Bumberta. Alderman Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, this is for a dwelling addition, but you've got to realise that the size of the, the blocks, a thousand and four square metres. I mean, when you read through the officer's report, this can, uh, easily fit, uh, on this, uh, on this block of land. I mean, there was one objection, uh, loss of privacy, but I've read the report and really knowing, knowing this area, knowing this space, I, I think there's, you know, plenty of room on that for, for this addition.
Alderman Bumberta. Other speakers? The motion then is the officer's recommendation for approval with subject to conditions, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point four is a development application for eighty-one South Street, Bellreid, three multiple dwellings. Alderman Walker, thank you. Do we have a second? Alderman Hume, thank you. Speakers?
Other recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Hume, other speakers? Alderman James?
I mean, uh, I just draw counsel's attention to the, um, compliance with the zone and the codes on page one hundred and eleven, one hundred and twelve. Uh, and again, um, the standard is site coverage and private open space. Proposal, the private open space of the existing dwelling is not directly accessible from the habitable room. Private open spaces for unit two is located at the southern, at the south of the dwelling. And just a comment from the officers on the performance criteria three. The existing dwelling has private open space located to the front, the rear of the dwelling, which is easily accessible. Go then to, um, uh, the, uh, acceptable solution regarding E six point six point one A one. Proposed six car parking spaces, proposed two per dwelling. The acceptable solution, number of car parking spaces must be in accordance with the table E six. One, which specifies two spaces per dwelling and one business, uh, space parking, a total of seven. And what's being, uh, proposed here is a variation to that parking requirement. And finally, under the clause E six point seven point three A one, vehicle pass, vehicle passing areas along an access. A passing, proposed passing bay, seven point five metres long and five point two metres wide is provided on site starting. Vehicle passing must, I emphasize, must be provided any of the following applies that serves more than five car parking spaces. But th- these are standards that have been brought in under SIPs, the Clarence Entryee Planning Scheme. And they are, they are standards that ought to apply, in my view. And then again, you've got the variation in the, uh, in the print here that, um, basically says there is enough passing bays and so on, horrific. I, I think, Mr Mayor, that at this stage, we are very careful about what we should or shouldn't approve or abide by as far as the acceptable standards are concerned. Because it's a new planning scheme and we don't want to seem to be on those drawing too much, uh, out of the debate and allowing us to be basically, um, told that the standards are really not a means by which we should be gauging or assessing our particular proposal. We should be relying, and I use the word again, the subjectivity that would come, and I believe is coming out, not only in this particular proposal, but in the others, as far as allowing a variation to a proposal.
Alderman Mifflin?
Just to follow on from that, Mr Mayor, I think that Alderman James had a point with regard to the fact that some of these units are actually two and three bedrooms, they're not just single dwell, they're not single story and they're not single bedroom. So one car park per unit will not be sufficient with three bedroom units. So therefore I stand by the new car parking arrangements because when we go into other areas where we have the cul-de-sac, that's when we start to have the problems with on-street parking. And so therefore I would support the new parking arrangement.
And if you look at the officer's recommendations, then this site is located approximately two hundred and fifty metres all conditions from Clarence Street, which is a public transport route, and there's on-street parking along, along South Street. And there's no wording that the standard on the previous scheme is six and that in the past has been provenated with. So if we're going to insist on, uh, saying we've got to have an extra one for the visitors, I mean, you know, it's been provenated with the thing, I know you're going to say, well, because that's the protocol, that's the standard, we've only locked into that. But I think you should stop, you know, like the governor, with that extent.
I'd reply, Alderman Walker. Motion is the officer's recommendation with approval, subject to conditions, all those in favour? Against? Carry. Eleven point three point five is a development application for fifty-one Trendmere Road, Harrow, for two multiple dwellings. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Second up? Alderman Chong? Yep. Speaker?
I heard the representative's comments this evening. Um, I still, I still believe that we need to rely on the officer's advice and the officer's expertise. And as Alderman James, we, Alderman Walker, we're not paying any experts. Council officer's advice states in relation to representations, privacy is not a discretionary component, traffic is not discretionary. Overshadowing proposals considerably satisfy performance criteria views, there's no protection of views and, and this cannot be, this cannot be considered. There are major representation, the major representation issue and there appears based on officer's comments, reading or know, council discretion in these matters.
Just to, just to add to that with the new entry planning scheme, two things, firstly, you can't separate the acceptable solutions and the performance criteria, they are both equally important in how we make decisions. But also where we can use discretion as body and title, if you look at page one hundred and thirty-five, because the portions of the building are within the building envelope, we don't have discretion about certain parts of the occupation, we actually don't have a capacity to change them. Um, uh, sometimes we don't particularly like odd bits of things, you can't just pick and choose what you don't like, you have to support it in accordance with the planning scheme, and I think we need to support it.
Figures? Alderman James?
Um, I don't want to go through the number of acceptable solutions, uh, standards where there have been a deviation and which the officers have gone ahead and provided the performance criteria on why the, this particular proposal and some of the conditions need to be buried. I will draw counsel's attention to page one hundred and thirty-three to clause ten point four point two A three. And we're talking about setbacks and building envelope for all dwellings. The proposal, proposed house one protrudes outside the building envelope by zero point four six metres, reducing gradually to within the building envelope over approximately seven metres above bedroom one and two and it's en suite on the southeast side. So it, it does not meet the setbacks or the, uh, building envelope dwellings. Quite clear, in the performance criteria that has been, um, stated here for the recommendation for this to be deviated from or changed, it says, and I quote, "It is only a small section of the dwelling which is outside the building envelope in this location." Sun shadow diagrams have been provided by the applicant. We had a similar situation with High Meta Street under the old scheme. It wasn't within the building envelope, it was out by about pretty much the same measurement. What did we do under the old scheme, we knocked it back because of its overshadowing, its height, et cetera. In this case, it's out, it's outside the building envelope. And this, and in this situation, it has performance criteria which says, well, we don't need to worry too much about that because the sun shadow diagrams have been provided by the applicant which demonstrate the proposed dwelling does not produce the sunlight in the adjacent property, the southeast and west in that. And we can go on and on, look at the privacy for all dwellings, which is quite clear within the Clarence Planning Scheme, within ten point four point six A two. Proposal, one bedroom of dwelling two will face into the kitchen of the dwelling with the windows not quite directly opposite each other. Whereas the acceptable solution says that's not the case, that's not allowed. The performance criteria in this regard is, and it's only three, three lines. As the windows do not directly align, there is a separation of three point four metres between the dwellings and the sill heights of the windows arrays used between, that, that, between the buildings will be reduced. Three lines on an important acceptable, uh, standard which is, which is within our planning scheme and the qualification, and I'll use the word again, the subjectivity in relation to this is on the basis that they do not, the windows do not align. Whereas the acceptable solution goes in the ten lines on why it has to be accepted as being to have a setback of less than three metres from a side boundary. If the dwelling is a multiple dwelling, there's be at least six metres from a window. That's in the acceptable solutions and standards. And the performance criteria, as officers said, is three lines which just, in my view, just doesn't have the meat or the qualification to be able to substantiate why there should be a deviation.
Okay, Alderman James, any other speakers? Alderman Cusick, right reply?
Just to, to respond to Alderman James, I can't quite reconcile his comments to the comment on page one thirty-five. The off, from the officer, both in relation privacy, both portions of the dwelling referred by the representative located within the building envelope and as such are not discretionary components.
Yeah, motion then is the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions, all those in favour? Against? Carry. Item eleven point three point six is a development application for thirty-four Beluk Street, Lauderdale. Thank you, Alderman Turley, second Alderman Mifflin. Speakers? Alderman Turley?
I, I think it's quite, uh, relevant, Mayor, that the new dwelling is positioned in approximately exactly the same location as the, um, existing dwelling and therefore has no change to the impact on the coastal area, which is quite relevant. The, um, the adjacent properties, um, labelled picnic reserve and road. And therefore the land, um, is going to be maintained as a reserve area and pedestrian access to the beach. Um, there's no plans to remove the vegetation or, uh, upgrade it to a parking facility. So the proposed deck will not be overlooking any adjacent, uh, residentially developed sites. And nor will it be overlooking a highly utilised public recreation space. The pool and the deck, um, they're on ground level, they're behind a high rendered two metre fence. Uh, they won't, um, prevent any, um, observation of passive surveillance. So as far as I'm concerned, this, um, proposal as the officers have recommended should be approved.
Alderman Mifflin?
Um, I support the recommendation, but I note that there was no environmental conditions applied to it and I would have thought that considering it was a frontal gene system with some mature trees, that those trees were given consideration for impact on their root system. That is an area of high erosion to this council. And I think that consideration should be given for the protection of those trees and the plants and up them smaller ones.
Yeah, any other speakers? Right reply? I'll put the motion then, the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, Alderman Campbell? Eleven point three point seven is a subdivision application at seven sixty Dorans Road and one sixty-seven Dixon Point Road for five lots subdivision. So, Alderman Walker, thank you, second up, Alderman Pierce, speakers?
Look, uh, it has been through the normal subdivision process, it's been appropriately allotted, uh, I don't potentially care a lot for the way it's been carved up, but that's, uh, totally, uh, totally, um, in line and reasonable. It's, it's acceptable. Um, it, it's a reasonable subdivision and we should support it.
Alderman Pierce?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, the only thing I was...
The only thing I was concerned about is the capacity of Dorans Road, uh, it, it does certainly could do with, uh, some upgrading, but that, not, not a part of this subdivision application, uh, but I just see that's one of the concerns. The other concerns, I believe, have been all addressed and are certainly in this report, so I think that we should support the recommendation.
Other speakers, Alderman Farnham, and then Alderman James.
Um, I do support the current application, but it's very obvious that the road is there with an intent to first subdivision in the future. And in light of that and discussion on this amongst our fowls, I would hope that we could see a bit of a local area plan, so that that area where we have some other roads in the area which are dead ends and cul-de-sacs, are given some regard, so that we have a continuous roadway and access around those areas, because it's, I can see where the intent will be in the future for subdividing two or three other larger blocks in the area.
Yeah, Alderman James.
Um, I would like to ask a question to the appropriate officer, and it may be Mr. Lovell or it may be Mr. Mayor, please, Mr. Graham, uh, and it's to do with Dorans Road, and my question, uh, believed to Mr. Graham, is that the current width of Dorans Road, the Dax, at the current time, meets in that cul-de-sac, is that road going to be exactly the same width where this proposed to extend Dorans Road into the subdivision? I would just like to know whether or not it's going to be of the same dimension, or is it going to actually narrow, well, from a narrow road into a much wider road?
Um, good, Mr. Mayor.
Question on, on what we call road reservation, and I know road reservation doesn't necessarily mean that it's, uh, the gravel road, uh, what I'm trying to ascertain here is that the gravel road, the current gravel road, not the road reservation, the current gravel road is that of the same dimension as the proposed extension of Dorans Road into the subdivision, not the road reservation, the gravel road, the existing gravel road. Another question. The, the entire area on page one seventy-six, the entire area of land proposed to be transferred to council, um, is that? Well, the question here is, is that area a little public open space?
Uh, perhaps Mr. Lovell might be the best to answer that one. The other questions, Alderman Hurley, I think you're the next.
I was, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, was pleased to see the additional public walkway in this proposal and the drainage reserve from Dorans Road extension. Uh, the minor lot reconfiguration has occurred as a, a process that, uh, the developer has agreed to, um, and the freehold access strip from Dorans Road to the balance slot, um, has been deleted, and the road widening and the termination of Dorans Road to facilitate a, a turning, a turning head has, um, been part of the conditions as well, so I think this makes this quite a favorable subdivision.
You. Other speakers? Right up the far, Alderman Walker. The motion is the officer's recommendation, subject to conditions, all those in favour. Carried unanimously, and could we recall Alderman Campbell, please? What about Albo, or?
He's chatting out loud.
Item eleven point three point eight is a, a proposed consent memorandum in regard to a sub, subdivision application twenty-eight and thirty King Street, hundred and eighty-one Oprit Road. Uh, I think Alderman Walker was first to his feet, but I'll take a second from Alderman Farnham.
Hurley, okay.
Look, uh, I do indeed support this motion, uh, in fact, I supported the application as earlier guise, and whilst that was unsuccessful, seems the resolution has been met, that both parties are acceptable towards, um, a hundred and eighty lots is good news, uh, it's improving accommodation options, it's helping put downward pressure on, uh, land sales, uh, it's, it's good news for new and existing Clarence residents. There are problems with the Australian housing market, uh, and there are perverse incentives regarding investment. Um, there are some key metrics, uh, that are, that are worthy of consideration when it comes to housing purchase, uh, in the current environment. These include, um, the years of annual salary, uh, equivalent to the cost of an average house, and this has significantly gone up, uh, in the space of the generation. And, uh, another interesting metric that particularly pertains here, I think, is that, um, the percentage cost of a new build that is taken up with the land acquisition cost, again, I, I don't think that percentage has ever been higher than it is now, so a hundred and eighty lots coming onto the market does help put downward pressure on, on, uh, on land costs and, and increases the availability of options for people to look at dwellings. There's quite a built-up amount of infrastructure within the, um, not-too-distant vicinity, and, um, I think that, uh, we should look at what the officer's recommendations are, after all, we're within some planning grounds, um, there really aren't any substantive concerns to base a refusal, uh, and I would concur that we should proceed, uh, by supporting the application. It's good for Clarence and it's good for intergenerational equity.
Be on me, Farnham.
Well, we're not actually requiring approval, we've already semi-approved, because the only reason we refused it was because there was not a connecting road that went through the subdivision for the benefit of the transport for the people who will eventually end up buying in this area. And whatever percentage for the housing market is appropriate to other areas, this particular subdivision doesn't sit within one, that seems to attract a lot of buyers very quickly, it seems to be an area that, um, develops quite slowly. Uh, my reasons for refusing this originally were based on the staff's proposals that the road had been changed from the original subdivision presented to council, and therefore the, um, current application, which is a consent agreement, is that the road infrastructure now reflects good integration and also gives an ability for a proper transport system to be initiated, something Oak Downs didn't have for over twenty years. So congratulations, however, I don't think that the way the market's going in this particular side of the street is going to be vastly taken up very fast. And I would hope that maybe as a council, we could promote the state government in getting it going quicker by looking at housing affordability and the same schemes that the government have promoted with the sale of their housing stock, because this is an area where we could support people getting, uh, a low income and getting them loans to provide for their own accommodations, and council has not done these things in the past, but this is the opportunity of looking at housing.
Alderman Hume.
Mayor, we unfortunately have areas within our municipality in which there are pockets of disadvantage, and the way that that's come about, there, there are historical reasons for it, and I think that a good way to address that issue is to make sure that communities are connected, not divided. And Clarenham Vale is an area that is increasingly, well, sorry, not increasingly, has, has in, in the past felt, uh, cut off and isolated, um, simply because of the, of the layout of the area, its, its separation from other suburbs, other communities, and so that's why, uh, this interconnectedness, uh, is, is so important between communities in this area. So that the Clarence Plains area, the rugby Clarenham Vale, Oak Downs, uh, the other developments going on around that lead hill are, are all seen as, as part of an, an integrated whole, uh, rather than, you know, us allowing property to disbandish to continue to be isolated. Um, and that's why I think this consent agreement is actually a, a good outcome for those communities.
Alderman Hume. Other speakers? Alderman Hurley.
I have always looked at, um, the suburb of Clarenham Vale and thought what fabulous land it is, and have always thought that anybody who had, um, a home on that particular piece of land should well appreciate it, and this, um, subdivision is another example of magnificent land, and the fact that the, um, open space has been more evenly spread out through this subdivision, that the connectivity has been achieved, I didn't, um, I did support the developer in, in understanding what, um, his issues was before, but this is a compromise which will suit the developer and suit, um, council in its deliberations, but I think it's a great result, and I think that whole area, whether it be Clarenham Vale, rugby, Oak Down, is all ready for a great revival, and we've got some magnificent land happening in that area.
Yeah, I appreciate the debate, but as, as Kirk, um, just picking up on, on stimulus or encouragement, uh, issues that I think was raised by Alderman Farnham. Uh, currently, up until the end of this year, the first home, uh, owners grant the first home builder boost, uh, is still in place, it's twenty thousand dollars for a new property on a block. Don't know that that's necessarily the best way to stimulate these markets, I think there, there are other ways to go about it, uh, taking up stamp duty, to my mind, would be better than throwing twenty grand with one hand and pouring it back with another, but that is in place and that should help stimulate, uh, this area amongst others, and, um, I hope it succeeds.
Yeah, the motion is that we support the consent memorandum, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point nine is a subdivision application for two hundred and eleven Score Road, Stanford, Alderman Campbell.
I know the recommendation, we've talked of this on a number of occasions, back as far as two thousand and twelve.
Second to Alderman Piers, sorry.
Thanks. Yes, uh, I think we've spoken on it long enough, uh, over the years, thanks.
Alderman Piers.
Uh, similar to the deputy mayor, mayor, that I think we've been through this many, many times now, there's certainly a lot of conditions on this that, uh, I think everyone should be happy now, it's been discussed many times in council, so I ask for the Alderman's approval.
Speakers? Right up the far. Motion is that we approve the subdivision application, subject to conditions, all those in favour. Carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. It's nothing under customer service. Eleven point five point one, parking action plan for Bel Reve Oval. Alderman Chong.
Um, I'd like to move a slightly amended recommendation, politics was in today.
That's, uh, one circulated, isn't it?
Section D that everyone just had.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman Hume.
We got it.
Would you like to speak to the motions?
Uh, yes, just, just briefly, uh, there is no right answer, like to this problem, whatever we do, there's going to be issues, there's going to be questions, inevitably somebody will have to walk to a housing to park a car and, and they'll be, you know, replaced, however, we need to do something about the parking in this area, we need to find a way to deal with it, and the officer's recommendation is the best solution that we can find at the moment, I guess the, the additional comment puts a review at the end of six months, so that gives us time to assess it, to look at whether there's any refinements, changes that we need to make to ensure we're doing the best possible job for everybody in that area.
Alderman Hume.
Problem in this area, but unfortunately, it's, it's a difficult one to get the balance right between addressing the, the needs of residents, because you have, you have residents in that area who are complaining about the fact that during the day, uh, during weekdays and working hours, their streets are taken up by staff who are working at Flats and Arena who, um, park in the street all day, and that gives them, uh, difficulty with access to the properties, particularly off-street parking, but then at the same time, if there's parking restrictions in place, uh, there are some residents who, uh, have raised issues with that in that, um, they, they might have family come to visit during the day and they need more, more parking spaces available and, available in their homes. It's really difficult to, to strike a balance, and, and I think that's why this, this review is particularly important. We can't simply, I, I don't believe we can simply rely on Cricket Tasmania to, to issue an edict to their staff and say, you, you will park within the Bel Reve Oval area and all, all the Beet Street car park, um, I think there, there are some restrictions needed to, to address this problem. Uh, at the same time, those, if, if you introduce restrictions in a particular area, you can have the potential to push the problem further out to other areas, uh, the question is how far out do they need to go before that then becomes a, um, disincentive to park in the street and incentive to park where they're really supposed to? Um, and I don't know whether anyone can answer that question, not the reason why a review's particularly important, uh, but at least with the, the restrictions in, you know, a, a small area of the street, uh, we can have the, the option for residents in that area, um, who want people to park nearby them when they're visiting, uh, and they have to park on the street, um, they can, they can at least still park nearby and, and walk down, uh, like some arrangements like that. Like I said, it's, it's, it's a vexed issue, uh, but, you know, we need to come up with some kind of solution because the, the status quo obviously isn't working, um, and I, uh, done a good job, uh, coming up with this recommendation, um, I think we could have, as a council, handled the issue a bit better initially, um, and, you know, consultation. Recommendation's a good one, but, but the review's certainly important to see, uh, you know, what the experience is, what's in place.
Speakers? Alderman James.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, I just want to pick up on a point that Alderman, Alderman mentioned a moment ago, when he, I think I heard it correctly, when he said that, um, you know, he asked to expect Cricket Tasmania to direct their staff to park within the, within the boundaries of the Bel Reve Oval, well, I, I, I disagree with that, I, I think that Cricket Tasmania- I think that Cricket Tasmania has an obligation, has an obligation to make sure it utilizes those parking spaces within the complex. Now, gate two, gate two, I think from memory, and I was down there on Sunday, and I think within gate two, parking off the street within the complex, there's about 35 spaces that's undercover. Currently, six of those are occupied with billboards and promotion gear, pumps and carts and so forth, and that is not being utilized, it's not being utilized. And gate one, I think that there's a balance of about 40 there. So again, that has been utilized for sizzle and sausage and other entertainment. There was about half a dozen people on deck chairs there last Friday. So they're not parking within the complex. And I think it's a, you know, we have an obligation to say to Cricket Tasmania, come on, utilize those spaces within your permit, well, in the quarters with your permit and park off the street. The other thing about this motion that really gets up my nose, and I know you'll probably say, oh, he's had it again, he's had it again. Well, I've probably been at this for nearly 20 years and one of the things that was mentioned at one of our meetings last week, and I won't mention the Alderman's name, why in the heck did we build this complex here in this suburb when there are other places which would be more fitting? Now, again, it's been said by a number of people around this table, and I know that it's got so far now that if you wanted to pick up poleless bowlers and take it down to a green area near the airport, which makes sense and, you know, that's probably where it should have been, but then again, it would cost millions and it would cost, it wouldn't, it couldn't be sustained, that idea at all. So look, the motion that's currently before us, and I like the idea of a six-month review, I think there needs to be review, but it doesn't address the question of them and us. On the BelRee Oval side, it's unrestricted parking. Opposite, the residents have restricted and some unrestricted. Why on one side of the border, on the BelRee Oval side, where they can park all day, that's the staff or people going to the oval, no restrictions, whereas on the other side, there's two hours and some unrestricted from Queen to Park? Isn't that unfair? I just think that is unfair where you're really getting people's backs up. Whereas I would have thought, I would have supported some unrestricted and restricted parking on the BelRee Derwent Street side and some unrestricted and restricted on the resident's side, on the western side. But no, we're basically going ahead and creating another problem by saying, well, Cricket Tasmania have every right to park there all day, all night, on their side of Derwent Street, and the residents have only a limited time to park and it discriminates against them. So look, why are we doing this? We've created a problem. If you'd taken on my board, on board what I suggested six, seven years ago about taking the car parking component from the BelRee Oval, where we waived the car parking provision of car parking on-site, because at the time, the officers recommended that it be, there was enough parking within the vicinity of the BelRee Key and the surrounding streets in South Park. And we estimated that cost, if we had a recoup from Cricket Tasmania, well over a million dollars, that was commensurate. But we didn't do that.
Thank you, Alderman James.
And we basically created a problem for ourselves.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Walker and then Alderman Firth.
Mr Mayor, I think some of Alderman James's things shouldn't go without remark. As someone who was on council actually when Shire's hit to turn back time was on, perhaps if you had made some decisions at that time regarding this, then we wouldn't be working through some of the challenges that we have today. We have to take those challenges alongside the benefits. And there are profound benefits in having a boutique, amazing stadium in our municipality, in close proximity to transport links. And I can't think of a cricket ground anywhere where you can go for a swim at lunchtime, potentially not even being.
Through the chair, please, Alderman.
So that's one point. But the second point that was raised was regarding them and us. Why do they get unrestricted all-day parking and the us get restricted? Well, it's a pretty simple answer. We're doing this whole limited-time parking call, what one Alderman has referred to as the us. The other side where the oval is, is unrestricted parking. Let it fill up and if there's no park there, too bad, so sad. What this process is about is trying to provide some turnover so people are visiting residents in this affected area are likely to be able to get a park and not have to walk such a great distance. This is a challenge then, the timed parking in this area, but it's a challenge we're taking on for the benefit of residents and it's something that's, again, not wanting to refer to that Shire song, we perhaps could have handled a bit better over the last few months, but we've gone through it. This, I believe, is the best outcome through it and we should support the amendments.
Three, Mr Mayor, I'm relatively new to council, therefore I can't take credit for any decisions that have gone on before me, but there are a number of people around the table that have been here for a number of years and they, they have to wear the rags. As far as I'm concerned, BelRee Oval is here to stay and we have to, we have to get used to that. And if anyone looked at the paper today, you may have seen an insert which was, which made you feel absolutely proud to look at that oval. The aerial shots show it in its fantastic location. It is showcased to the world, so perhaps we all better go home and take another look at that paper today because there was an insert there about the history of cricket and there is an oval there that is right in our midst that we should be extremely proud of. It's very difficult for council to preempt the parking problems that will arise and what council has within its charge is to address those issues as they arise because you cannot predict behaviour. I've only been approached by one resident about their parking issue, one resident. And sometimes that causes people to go into a flurry because they want to appease that resident. But we're not here to necessarily appease one resident, we've got to appease the neighbourhood. And what we've got is a parking action plan that supports council to adopt the parking policy and strategy and it's practical application of this plan is what will determine is the next move. And that's all you have to wait for. It could well work and if we have a six-month review, we may be able to sit around the table and say, gee, that works well. We may still have one voice complaining, we may, if we've got more than one voice, then we do have an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman.
Mr Mayor, I do have a bit of a quandary. When on one hand tonight we were actually informed with a parking, with a development application, that parking on the road was available and that seems to be getting performed ever given rights. So within the context of that development application, the fact that there was only six on-site but on-road parking was validation for approval because there was on-street parking. Now, to me, that is a given right. A number of times, residents have complained, not just in Beach Street but in other areas. And that was where the discussion for permits come about and I think that that discussion is valid, that we should consider permits. I was often believed that with this trial, that we would then be looking at the allocation of permits because the residents have got no guarantees of rights to park on the road. So I can't see anywhere in here, unless I can be informed as it is, in the fact that we are actually talking about doing a six-month trial and looking at the residents' interest.
Other speakers?
Alderman here.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I do have some sympathy with parking in this area. Now, one of the things that annoyed me and that's the people that work inside the ground, being football people, cricket people during the week, when I agree with Alderman James and others that they should park inside, but I did forget a couple of other things. There are other functions there and through my work I've been to over the years, I've been to a cancer fundraiser there and I've been to a Paralympics fundraiser there, which you don't realise that they do occur. And to have restricted parking on the oval side would be pretty, you know, probably unrealistic, even though I think it could have been four hours, I think that would be, you know, a good time for anybody to move their car. You know, we're working because we've got complaints, I did personally, but apparently people did get complaints about people parking there and we're just trying to do the best we can. I think reviewing it six months is the right way to go. I'm a bit like Alderman McFarlane, I think it would have been just easier to give the residents a parking permit. I really believe that every house there should have got at least one parking permit. I think that would have just solved the issue. And really, I just think that for six months, it's worth a try. You know, General Manager, I'm not quite sure when these signs is going or whatever. I don't know how hard we're going to be on everybody like for the first week. I don't know if we're going to come down hard or just go easy the first week or so, just so people get used to it. Because, you know, we try not to book residents and that's what we just want to be careful.
Other speakers? Oh, sorry, Alderman Von Beder.
Yes, due to the fact that I was next to workshop, I'm unable to be there. I've just got a couple of questions. I suppose I have the thought that we've got some definitional issues of underlying short distance from any property. That's very subjective and I think that'll be something that perhaps the review might The other is in relation to if we're going to look at that second stage, that it will be because of regular occupancy reaching 85%. Three, Mr Mayor, could I actually have an explanation of regular occupancy? See what that actually describes as, if you like? How does that determine how's regular occupancy is? But it's dependent on our survey. Yes, that's good. And the other thing that I've noted, which has been brought up by some other Aldermen, is that on page... that this option is required. So I would imagine that that will go hand in hand with giving...
Three, Mr Mayor, that's picked up under recommendation, yes. Other speakers? Right of reply, Alderman Chong?
Just very briefly, a couple of things to mention. I guess one of the things that's come up is about parking on one side of the road being unrestricted and the other side being restricted. Look, at the end of the day, there's no rules that say that residents can't park on the unrestricted side of the road. It's not cordoned off or barricaded off or, and I mean, given the hours that most people get to work, I suspect the residents will be there first. If you've got a car that you need to leave there, I'd be putting it there early in the morning. The other thing is, one of the issues that came to a lot of the residents was families visiting. If you've got a family visiting, they're probably not going to be there today. They want a couple of hours, they want to be able to come and visit and leave and a two-hour restriction is probably reasonable for most visitors, most of the time. I know we've talked about permits, I know we're going to look into it, as has been discussed in the workshop, they're not necessarily the answer because they're vehicle-specific and they won't help the visitors, they won't help children that come and visit, they won't help those things because they're tagged to a particular vehicle, they're not just free-for-all systems. So, you know, as I said at the beginning, it's not necessarily really my answer, but I think this is the best answer that we can do and I think...
Okay, so the motion before the Chair is that we adopt the parking action plan for BelRee Oval and Varans, noting a report back in six months. All those in favour? Against? Moving on to governance, 11.7.1, that the quarterly report for the 30th of September be received and that we amend the estimates. Alderman Chong, thank you. Alderman Farland, speaker.
Something that struck me as very funny when I was reading it and, but this came up in the planning discussions earlier. On page 47 of the quarterly report, it talks about preliminary planning assessments that we offer to developers and how a number of those have gone down because the developers are looking at the inter-county scheme and saying, it's all too hard, we don't understand this. Not just lodge the application, you can tell us whether it's discretionary or not. Doesn't that make a comment on the issue that we've been having with the planning scheme?
Just I'd like to note that on page 265 dot point two, talking about that there is currently no regular programmed undertaking of inspection for road reservation trees and nature stretched around the city, I thought we did.
We haven't got that. Oh, my apologies. I'll be back.
Are there any other speakers on the quarterly report? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Couple of questions on page 11 and I think this question may be to General Manager or to discuss.
Graham. I can start with the General Manager.
Well, if that's the case. Under the Clarence Aquatic Centre Emergency Maintenance, 1415, in the last paragraph it says that the, further till there was a major fan failure on number one air handling unit and in March 15, the number two required bearings, et cetera. There were two fans on each air handling unit and these works were outside the manufacturer's warranty period. Mr Graham just gives an outline, one percent of how much we're up for there or is that still to come in on the estimate?
I think the question is, what was the cost of the extra work given that was outside
Page 18, reference to the Lauderdale Canal Beach Access and the Banpra Reef Trial Rowing. Quotations are being sought for design obtaining approval in the Crown Land. The Crown Land, has there been any indication as to whether they're going to give us a tick in the box or is it going to be a drawn-out process?
Okay. Any more questions, discussion on quarterly report and all the amended estimates? Okay, so right of reply. Put the motion in, all those in favour?
Any more questions, discussion on quarterly report and all the amended estimates? Okay, so, right of reply? Put the motion in. All those in favour? All right, let's carry unanimously. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 11.7.2, which is calling for a nomination of an alderman to the Southern Tasmanian Council's Authority Regional Waste Group. I'd like to nominate Alderman Von Berto, Mayor. Alderman Von Berto, are you happy to accept the nomination? Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alderman Jane Walker.
Alderman Walker, would you like to accept the nomination?
No, I wouldn't do it.
Okay, so we need a ballot. Are there any other nominations? We did take a second there. Yeah, well, I don't think we actually need a second.
No, I don't think you do.
No.
All right. General Manager, if we can conduct the ballot for that, please.
Sure.
One, two, or just one, or what?
Just one.
Just tick one or write one?
Some indication that... Got. Don't worry. We should have actually asked him to leave the room.
As far as he forgot a debate.
Unless it's six all, in which case that'll be a different question.
Alderman Von Berto is elected. 11.7.3 is Review of Council Policy, Management of Trees on Council Land. Alderman McFarlane. Second, that's Alderman Thirley. Alderman McFarlane.
Ah, yes, Mr. Mayor, I do believe that. I have faith in the staff in implementing the policy to a large degree with a certain set of environmental standards. However, mine is more, my concerns are at the moment with the current policy is that in detail, we haven't actually been given any details. Two questions that were asked at the workshops, the ones was, on my side, the details and numbers of where the council has planted trees over that period since the introduction of the policy. And, did we? Oh, good. So...
Order please.
Yes, I know there is a number that says 101,700 individual plantings were planted. However, in the past, on a number of occasions over ten years, I have commented that when the seedlings get planted out, there actually needs to be a backup with a watering system that goes along with tree planting. And I don't know to what degree those sorts of questions have ever been answered. So, what is the percentage of that 101,700 trees that actually survived? Because I personally don't see a great difference in our tree, nature strip forests, where the trees have been cut down, the larger trees, and where we then adopted a height restriction, that the smaller trees have actually survived if they were already planted in the first place. And a couple of those areas are in places where there was no effect or aspect of anybody, and one of the areas where trees were cut out were along Little Howard Beach, along Allen Beach, where we've done modifications to the foreshore for the cycle trap. And at the time when those projects were approved, I was given assurance that trees were going to be planted, but I've never seen those trees in this high altitude enough. So within this report, as much as I endorse the management of it, I fail to see that the management then follows up. But I would like to have some response to my concerns that I have stated frequently over the last ten years.
As was made reference, there was a workshop on this, on this matter, and we did have quite reasonable debate about all of this. The question of trees, I know when I actually worked in councils, there were a couple of things that always caused problems, dogs and trees and rubbish, and they were the three things that were a major issue. So trees, it's a huge, huge expense, and a question that I raised about a proactive means of dealing with trees along the border of roads, the resources are just not available to undertake that level of attention. And as the suggestion of going behind and watering the trees, a lot of these obviously would be native trees which have to withstand and grow into very healthy trees because they are able to withstand the conditions that they're planted in. So based on the fact that we have limited resources or enough resources to do what is contained within this, I think this is a good recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Right of reply?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the introduction to the management of trees on council land, it actually states in purpose number two, that council is committed to increasing the number of trees and shade canopy in the urban areas in the city, and the forestation or reforestation of natural water sources across forest and dirt. I believe that I travel around Clarence and its vicinity often enough to know and hear in myself that this is not a programmed maintenance process that we should be in this document. And so I would seek support from council, one, for this particular document, and two, to be more progressive in having a management plan for that to evolve. There are people who have spoken to me only a couple of days ago down the beach, and reached about the lack of shade along the beachfront, so that in summer, we're in those big pine trees cut down which offer shade. That's what people want. I will be fine through with the motion if you look at how the management may be here.
Thank you.
I seek support for this stand.
So the motion before the Chair is that we adopt the tree policy. All those in favour? Against? Carry. Item 11.7.4 is the closure of the footpath at 36 Kenton Road. Alderman James. Second, Alderman Campbell. Sorry, Alderman Cusick, you're beating for the punch. Alderman James. Alderman Campbell. Other speakers? Motion before the Chair, all those in favour? Against? Carry. 11.7.5 is that we empower the GM to enter into a new lease with the OHA Football Club at 18 De Bonfords Lane. I think Alderman Piers was first there, I'll take it as a second. Any discussion?
Based on that, is it possible to get some of those potholes in that De Bonfords Lane cleaned up? I tell you what...
Can we take this as a request or a question during Alderman's question time? It's not quite relevant to...
It will use up one of my other questions that I have already prepared. So I just would like to support...
Look, Alderman James, this is not relevant, this is not relevant to this motion.
And therefore I will hope the council does as well.
I'm quite happy to entertain an Alderman's request on this matter in accordance with time. However, any other speakers? Right of reply?
No.
You're not falling into a pothole on this one.
I agree with it. That's all right.
All those in favour? Carry unanimously. Item 12, Alderman's question time, Alderman James.
He's coming. I question through you to the General Manager, Mr. Paul. Under Taz Water's statutory powers, does it have the authority or power to acquire private land to build a sewage scheme?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, let's take that on notice, but I would imagine as a corporation, GBE or the corporation where they're established, that they probably do have compulsory acquisition powers, yes. But I will take that on notice.
Second question, through me, through you. You know, I thought I was back in that chair when you were in the other time, and it's real difficult, you know, to try to get out of this.
Alderman James, is that a question, Alderman James? Ask the question.
My question through the mayor to the appropriate officer, and before I ask the question, can I say that I would like to congratulate, congratulate Mr. Graham on his comments in the weekly briefing report regarding the next stage of the footpath repair suburb schedule beyond Warrain. So I just want to get that out, okay? The question, the question is in relation to the roads in the city. Now, I know we've approved a lot of this, the next number of road in the 15, 16 budget. Would Mr. Graham be able to provide us with an update or a schedule of major road works which will be undertaken? Now, I see Mr. Tillie's gone straight to the quarterly report. I've looked through the quarterly report, and I cannot see that in there. I know there are a number of roads, Alderman Campbell...
I know, through the Chair, Alderman James.
Through the Mayor, Alderman Campbell, which in fact is, in fact, the, there's a number of roads listed in the quarterly report, but is it possible, through the mayor, to Mr. Graham to provide us with a schedule of the road, major road upgrades for the next...
What is the next? Alderman Walker?
Yes, first question is in relation to mountain bike track that we have in Mamuan Range. This is now quite an established facility, but I'm just wondering, since its inception, we've seen other places develop their own experiences, and I'm wondering whether we've had a look to see whether, in recent times, it's meeting the sort of experiential outcomes that it might be able to, that others are achieving, and whether we need to perhaps have a look at whether upgrades are required to provide contemporary experience?
Happening to it.
No.
Well, I think it's valid, trees up there. I think it is probably appropriate time for us to review the quality of the facility, the amenity of the bike park, and how it's going. It's been some years since it's been progressed.
I've had to write to the bike committees. They don't do non-lead trials. I don't know. Tracks and trails, sorry, I've run committee. I write to tracks and trails.
I think your query is born on circle of ground.
Thank you. Well, at work would be good. My next question is to you, your worship. I was in Launceston on Wednesday, and stayed overnight Thursday, as they say when in Rome do as the Romans do, and did manage to read one or two copies of the Examiner. I note, I note you were quoted in one in relation to mergers, and in particular, in the great, the great Southern Council indeed, and on that matter, that you quoted saying there was a strong case for a ward structure. So I'm just wondering, in the context of our last examination process with Sorrel that ended up with the proposition of a gerrymandered ward structure with Clarence residents being underrepresented by one and Sorrel represented, residents being underrepresented by one, what a strong case for a ward structure would look like in the South West corner?
Look, I couldn't possibly answer that, but there were two conditions in my statement. One was if a greater council was agreed, then there could be a strong case for a ward structure. If that's not wriggling, I don't know what is all that's...
There is a strong, the direct quote is there is a strong case, there is a strong case, so that case must exist, and I just, I don't, I don't believe that's been...
It was certainly presented by me over the phone because of the oral interview, that it could be a strong case. No, if, if one of the councils went ahead, there could be a strong case, and that was the way I was presenting.
So you're going with saying that there isn't necessarily a strong case for a ward structure?
I'm not entering that debate.
Well, I remain confused by this.
Well, so do I. You'll have to have another look at the article.
At least it's in the record.
You know what the media is like.
Well, we play at this point, it's nine fifteen.
Alderman Thirley?
I have one question, and it's purely a memory thing for me. The Epping Park in Lordedale, are there, there's some new toilet facilities that are going to be constructed somewhere near the Lordedale Yacht Club, wasn't there? Are they, are they going to service the Epping Park at all?
Mr. Graham, are you able to answer that?
I have no sense. Sorry? Yeah, I know, and I just wondered, are they? Because I had a query from a rate payer, through you, Mr. Mayor, I had a query that people were gathered in Epping Park and children had an urgent need, and there was absolutely nothing nearby. And I, when they rang me, I said, "I'm fairly sure that there is a proposed new toilet block." And I'm, I know, and I'm not either.
We can provide Alderman Thirley with an update in regard to the proposed toilets for Lordedale.
All right, we need to get, take that on notice. Alderman McFarlane?
Ah, Mr. Mayor, through you, through the General Manager. In light of the fact that the loophole legislation is coming into legislative council, I must apologise for not getting emotional through the usual times, but in regards to it, council geared by absolute majority, oh no, sorry, wrong thing, that Dan Ford discussed with us the planning reform that was supposed to result in faster, cheaper and simpler planning systems, the template for planning schemes, and the proposed reduced timeframe to assess and determine the permitted applications to 21 days. I would like to ask if the General Manager could write to the Legislative Council on behalf of the fact that this council has voiced its concerns, which are very similar and concurrent with what we get at footfalls, to the Legislative Council to support what the, what we get at footfalls.
Well, certainly undertaken, it'll probably be from the General Manager, but it'll convey council's decision to the Legislative Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Just so quickly, Mr. Mayor, hopefully all the aldermen will send the invitation to the One Community Together next Wednesday night, and I just wanted to ask whether they were also aware that the cut-off date applies Thursday, because we have to tell people.
Thank you. Very subtle question. Alderman here.
In light of the fact that the loophole legislation is coming into legislative council, I must apologize for not getting emotional to the issue any more time, but in regards to it, council deared by absolute majority, oh no, sorry, wrong thing, that Dan Ford discussed with us the planning reform that was supposed to result in faster, cheaper and simpler planning systems, the template for planning schemes and the proposed reduced timeframe to assess and determine the permitted applications to 21 days. I would like to ask if the General Manager could write to the Legislative Council on behalf of the fact that this council has voiced its concerns, which are very similar and concurrent with what we get in football, to the Legislative Council to support what we get in football.
Well, we'll certainly undertake, and it'll probably be from the General Manager, but it'll convey council's decision to the Legislative Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, Tom.
Just so quickly, Mr Mayor, hopefully all the Alderman have received the invitation to the Meehan Community together next Wednesday night, and I just wanted to ask whether they were also aware that the cutoff dates applied, because they have to tell people.
Thank you. Very subtle question. Alderman here. Alderman Voust.
Mr Mayor, is it possible for this to apply a maintenance contract for, for more than around about the surrounding neighbourhoods? It goes on year after year, and we just complain and they never do anything.
Yes, it is possible, but I would expect that it would be, we would have to top up the cost because they allocate only a certain amount of money for their maintenance contractor. They have given us an undertaking that they will devote some more resources to that particular precinct. Yes, we could take it over, but to maintain it to a higher standard than what they're maintaining at the moment would probably necessitate council contributing some resources in addition to what DIA currently, oh, PSG currently throw at us.
That's an accurate question. If that's not possible, can you give them a jolly up, you know, something like that?
I can say that we raised this matter, and every time we meet with DIA officers, and I think Mr Graham, I think how we've met with Mr Gregory only about three, oh, I was going to say four weeks ago anyway, but in recent times, and it was probably the first item we raised. We should officially jolly up train to undertake that.
Alderman Peers.
Mr Mayor, last question.
I've mentioned, I'm sure yourself, we're going to meet with Metro, has that occurred yet?
Wasn't here at the last meeting.
No, I'm not aware that we were. Alderman Peers, we certainly signed an MOU with Metro, I think at the last meeting or the meeting before, but I don't...
Alderman Von Berto.
Mr Big referred to a meeting that he...
He, he has requested a meeting with himself and the General Manager, and I don't know what he wants to talk about specifically at this stage. He did mention that he wants to talk about the zoning in Lordedale. So as with another meeting that we've been requested to have, we'll assess the situation. If we need to keep the Alderman informed, we'll certainly do that.
Yes. Alderman Campbell.
Yes, just one quick request, that the potholes in De Bonfords Lane be repaired as raised by other owners?
Well done. General Manager, can they be repaired?
Look, I think we've set a record tonight, we've never had everyone ask a question before in my time, so that's quite significant. I will take a procedural motion to go into class session. Alderman Campbell, second to Alderman Peers. Put the motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. First item is...